Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here?
Councilmembers Bagley, Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Okay, let's stand for a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at final call, public invited to be heard. So now we have the September 27 minutes to approve. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move approval of the September 27 minutes.
Second. Alright, that's been moved in the second. Let's vote. And that passes five to zero with councilmembers Bagley and councilmembers Peck absent. So Valerie, are there any agenda revisions?
No, Mayor Coombs, we don't have any.
Councilmember Christensen.
Last week, we had several members of the town, several citizens, ask for information about the oil and gas situation. And I believe it would be in everybody in the town's interest to have a forum at some time when we are able to discuss this. So I'm just suggesting that we do that in the future, when we're able to.
Okay. I've been asked by constituents whether or not the council be willing to support the, with the resolution for 1B, the open space, continuing the open space tax, and 1C, the sustainability tax. So I guess I'm asking permission from council if we've got a majority vote to want to put that as a resolution that we, council supports to just roughly, okay, it looks like it's not, so it's a three to two. And I guess if Joan and they were here, they'd probably cancel each other out. Okay, well, I guess we can put that on the agenda for a future agenda. It's the open space continuation, the continuation of the open space tax, 1B, and the sustainability tax, which is 1C. So 1B and 1C. Okay, is there a report from the city manager?
No report, Mayor Council.
Okay, so now we've got our special reports and presentation. So Joanie Marsh, actually, no, who's going to do the first, Sean, are you doing that?
Are you doing the proclamation before the presentation?
Well, in my thing, it's, the presentation goes first and proclamation's second, is the agenda I have.
So the presentation is regarding a commuter incentive program by Smart Commute Metro North for RTD riders using the LX route between Longmont and Denver. And Karen Stewart from Smart Commute Metro North is here to present this.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I'm Karen Stewart, Smart Commute Metro North Executive Director. And this is my colleague, Will Dreyer. He is program manager for iDrive i25. And that's the program we're going to talk to you about tonight.
Is this it, Sean?
Up here?
Yes.
Oh, it's this one, obviously. We'll get it yet. Oh, there we go. Longmont is a member of North Area Transportation Alliance, and we see Sean frequently, and we've seen councilmember Moore, and we've seen councilmember Santos before at our, at our meetings. We're 13 organizations, jurisdictions along I-25 that created North Area Transportation Alliance back in 2012, 2010, and created a transportation management organization called Smart Commute Metro North. There are seven transportation management organizations in the Denver metro region. They are funded by the Denver Regional Council of Governments, and they're a public-private partnership to promote improvements in transportation, to give information about mobility options, to really decrease traffic and improve air quality. That's our mission. Our board of directors and members are listed above. Eric Hansen, Adams County Commissioner, is this year's chair. And as you can see, we have a fairly robust board of directors with about a third to a half elected officials, and the rest are business members. Here's our partnership members. All of the native jurisdictions of which you were one are part of our business members. North Metro Chamber, and then all the way down through many of these that you'll recognize, like KeyWitt, Google, Digital Globe, St. Anthony North Campus, McWhinney, and they all belong to Smart Commute Metro North. This is our service area. We're pretty large. There are seven transportation management organizations in the Denver metro region. We're the newest, and we're the largest. We basically serve along I-25, but go as far up as Longmont, far over to the east as Brighton, and also Commerce City, and then as far down as Westminster, Commerce City, where it touches 36, and then Highway 70. Our funding sources are grants. We get grants from the Denver Regional Council of Government. We get reimbursable grants, 80%, 20%. We have an RTD marketing partnership grant. We have an IGA with the Colorado Department of Transportation to do outreach for what's called Transportation Demand Management Services on I-25. And that means we have programs to get people out of their cars and into car pools, ride-sharing van pools, transit, that sort of thing. And then we have a contract with the Regional Air Quality Council. They have something called Every Trip Counts, and this is the first year that they've done it up in our vicinity. We're Adams County and then beyond, and we promote activities that help with air quality. Our funding also comes from memberships, from specialized program funds. Google gave us a couple of thousand dollars this year to provide call and ride services to students who were going to work at Waterworld but didn't have a car. About 1,500 kids are under age 16 that work for Waterworld, and it's real hard for them to get jobs, particularly if their parents work during the day and they can't get to work. So we subsidized their trips to Waterworld, and we paid for our 479 trips this summer. We also have special events. Every year, we do something called the Next Big Thing. The Next Big Thing focuses on something that's current. Last year, we focused on some expansion along I-25. This year, we focused on the driverless car revolution. And then we have a contract with the North Area Transportation Alliance to do their administration. Other TMOs are funded in lots of different ways, and I just wanted to throw this slide up here because of the seven TMOs, we're the only ones that don't come and ask for money. We get money through the North Area Transportation Alliance. Our board of directors is probably going to have some revisit to that model, but wanted to let you know that almost all the TMOs get money from the city of Denver, or we're looking to Adams County to get some money and that sort of thing, in order to fund that 20% local match that we need for the grants that we go after. Operating costs are programmed in production expenses, payroll, equipment, insurance, payroll taxes, training, but our office space is provided by Adams County Economic Development. Huge saving to us. We say we're information, action, and advocacy. Information we provide at community outreach events and events like this. We provide information on CDOT routes for buses. We give updates on the rail lines. We give information on call and rides. We provide any kind of transportation information that might be germane to that group of people we're talking to. We do about 30 festivals a year, outreach festivals, all over our service area. Action is our programs. We do a lot of programs. We'll talk about two of those in just a moment. And then advocacy is really our support for going after tiger grants, or support for getting the rail line completed, or support for a bus service, those kinds of things. So RTD Transit Routes and Services, we talk a lot about the routes that are already in existence, and then we listen to jurisdictions who need enhanced bus service. We often are the first people in talking to RTD with a voice other than just a community voice, and we sometimes can go after some funding to help do some pilot programs. We did a pilot program this year where we extended a bus from 120th up to 144th in order to get workforce up to some retail that was there. North Metro Railline and Northwest Railline Quarters, we go to RTD a lot. We listen to what they have to say. We talk in support of getting transit up to this end of the Denver metro region. In Dr. Cog, we have my way-to-go ride-sharing platform. Many of you who know about Dr. Cog's way-to-go program, you have a representative at Dr. Cog as well. And we perform those programs throughout the service area. Van pool creation and open seats, and then we have CDOT projects, such as the express lanes on I-25 and HOV. This is some of the stuff that we've been doing. We have an annual Next Big Thing. We have GoTober, Hop On Board, School Pool, and Bike to Work Day. Want to tell you about GoTober. GoTober is a program sponsored by the Denver Regional Council of Governments, and they look to large employers to commit their employees to not driving alone two or three times a month. And the leaderboard has Xilinx as the leader this week. And Xilinx is a Longmont company that we work with, so we're really excited. We hope they keep that lead. That's quite a distinction in all of Denver to have that leaderboard. Hop On Board is where we try to help people who are along a rail line that's opening learn how to use that rail line, particularly if they're workforce. Sometimes that's a very good option for people who are entry level and who don't have cars to get to work. School Pool is an organization through Dr. Cog that allows schools to do an internally closed system to carpool match within that system. And many charter schools no longer have the ability to provide bus service, and that's a program that we can help facilitate. And then all of you are familiar with Bike to Work Day, and we provide support for Bike to Work Day. One of the advocacy pieces that we're doing as well is BRT service for Highway 7 and State Highway 119. And then we have multimodal transportation improvements on North I-25. And we always advocate for enhanced bus service in all our member jurisdictions. So we're looking for input from all of you as well. And if you have something in particular that you'd like some help on, at least a voice for advocacy, please contact us. We do Longmont employer outreach, Xilinx, GoTober, Digital Globe. We've done quite a bit here in Westminster with Digital Globe. We've provided support for a dozen Bike to Work Day breakfast stations and afternoon stations, and we provide technical support for the Bike to Work Day business challenges in Longmont. This is our idrivei25.com program, and this is the one we specifically want to mention tonight. There's on I-25 quite a bit of construction going on. In the last two years, the construction was from US 36 to 120th, and you watched that construction. And now the construction is from 120th north to State Highway 7. During that construction, we have a contract called a TDM contract to help people get out of their single occupancy vehicles. And the way we do this is we provide an incentive package for people willing to try an alternative. There is no bus service from State Highway 7 to 120th, but there is bus service from Longmont, the LX and LNX from Longmont down through the corridor down to Denver. And we'll provide a free 10-ride pass to anybody who currently drives I-25 and would be willing to try that LNX for a week. And the way they can get in touch with us is to go onto the idrivei25.com, and it will shoot you over to our page of incentives. Another incentive that we have is if anybody in Longmont is willing to create a carpool or join an existing carpool, we'll give a $30 gift card, Amazon gift card, for the first month, and 45 for the second month, in order for them to either create a carpool or join a carpool. And then also a $40 gift card to anybody who'll take an open seat on a van pool. This is for anybody in the Longmont area that drives down I-25, and instead of driving down as a solo, takes one of these options. So how can we help with your transportation challenges? You can let Sean know. You can let councilmember Moore know. He comes to our native meetings. Or any of the rest of you can contact us and let us know if there's something in specific we could help with your transportation problems. We're certainly not miracle workers, but we're willing to get in the fray, add a voice to the cause. Thank you very much. This is our contact information. And the way they can get in touch with us is to go on to the iDriveI25.com, and it will shoot you over to our page of incentives. Another incentive that we have is if anybody in Longmont is willing to create a carpool or join an existing carpool, we'll give a thirty-dollar gift card, Amazon gift card, for the first month and forty-five for the second month in order for them to either create a carpool or join a carpool. And then also a forty-dollar gift card to anybody who'll take an open seat on a van pool. This is for anybody in the Longmont area that drives down I-25 and instead of driving down as a solo, takes one of these options. So, how can we help with your transportation challenges? You can let Sean know. You can let Councilmember Moore know. He comes to our native meetings. Or any of the rest of you can contact us and let us know if there's something in specific we could help with your transportation problems. We're certainly not miracle workers, but we're willing to get in the fray, add a voice to the cause. Thank you very much. This is our contact information.
Thank you so much for presenting to us. I appreciate the work you do.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Thank you.
All right. Now, we've got a proclamation, and Joni Marsh, the Director of Planning and Development Services, is here to accept the proclamation. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. A proclamation designating October 2016 as Community Planning Month in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas change is constant, community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all community members to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the U.S., and whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of members of the Planning Commission and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Longmont, and whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of the city of Longmont and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now, therefore, I, Dennis L. Coombs, Mayor, with the virtue of authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim October 2016 as Community Planning Month in the city of Longmont in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Joni Marsh, Planning and Development Services. So, typically, we do this proclamation every year, and we have a roster of events that we're going to host. This year, we're going to be only hosting one event, which is for Boulder County planners specifically to come together to go over the permanent supportive housing study that the Consortium of Cities and the Tenure Planning Board commissioned several months ago, and so the consultant who prepared that will be coming to speak with us and have a dialogue so that all the cities who participate in the consortium can get a better understanding of how they may look at their community planning efforts in light of that study and how to provide more permanent supportive housing. I'd also like to just bring to your attention a couple of recent awards that we've been notified with regard to some of our planning efforts here at the city of Longmont. So, staff submitted our recently completed multimodal and comprehensive plan envisioned to the American Planning Association's Comprehensive Plan Standard Recognition, and we got a letter at the beginning of this week that we received a silver award. We'll receive that award at the 2017 National APA Conference in New York City. Secondly, we also have received an award from the Colorado Chapter of American Planning Association for the St. Vren Blueprint Plan, and that award is an award of merit in the community resiliency category, and that award will be presented on the 25th of this month at the Annual State Conference. So, kudos not just to our staff, to our Planning Commission, to council, and also to our community for their generous participation in all of our community planning events. That's what makes those plans important, and thank you this evening for the proclamation.
Thank you, Joni. (applause)
Thank you, members of council. My name is Dan Burkhart, 3565 Ivy Circle in Boulder. I'm also a property owner in Longmont and also in Hygiene, and I'm here to talk in opposition to the Gorley proposal for water tap change, and I just wanted to mention that I think it's a bad idea for our community there in Hygiene, but we also are very linked to Longmont, and I'm looking to hopefully get you guys to see that it's not in your best interest either. This has been approved by Boulder County with conditions, but in that proposal, they presented as if they already had their water agreement with Longmont. It came up that they didn't, so they added a condition to their approval. There's all kinds of moral reasons why I have concern with it. I also, and I'll defer those right now. I think you know the issues and concerns there. There's also legal issues. I'm a professional planner, and I have done master planning for communities all around the country, several in Longmont, although it's been quite a while. I've done a lot of job creation projects in Boulder County, and a lot of, even twenty years ago, I was seen as an expert in how to position municipalities and communities for economic development and help them attract good jobs and things like that. And so I had a series of speaking engagements and things like that to councils. I've had a lot of presentations to American Planning Association, et cetera. In that, what I've found is that the key, and I think it's really appropriate for Longmont, I think it's a fairly pro-economic development community, but what I've found over the years, the key to economic development is quality of life, and quality of life contains a lot of, a series of very important criteria that people don't pay enough attention to. They want economic development, but they don't go about it in the right way. So, there's things like school safety, quality of schools, things like that, and there's a whole list. This operation is right next to Hygiene Elementary. Longmont already has issues, if you ask me, with their perception of schools' safety, quality, et cetera. I've had people negatively look at my property because of the schools in Old Town Longmont. So, I would just advise, please consider this seriously, and I hope you will hear my heart about this. Thank you.
Debbie Schlep.
Yes. I'm Debbie Schlep, and I also live in Hygiene, and I'm at 11891 North 75th Street, and I'm also a property owner in Hygiene and a business owner. I have the Hygiene Cafe called Crane Hollow Cafe, and I don't know the legalities of getting water taps. I've heard a lot with the controversy going on, but as a person caring about the community of Hygiene and what we are out there, we're as much of a treasured community as I know Longmont considers yourselves as a treasured community. I like Longmont a lot, and we're very close proximity, and this being Community Planning Month, I just can see that we are a treasured community out there, and we're a small community, and we're unincorporated, so others, Boulder County, you are making decisions for us as a small community, and we're very small, and something like this coming into our community has a big impact. When we have activities or gatherings, it consumes that small area, and there's a church just east of this grow plant, marijuana grow plant. There's, the school is nearby, the cafe, art galleries, just, it's a very unique place, and I believe that this type of a business does not fit well in Hygiene. Those who have been a part of the community for years and generations and generations, no matter what they feel about medical marijuana or recreational use of it, they still do not see that it's really the place for a business of this type. And as somebody who cares and hears a lot from the community and loves what we are and the close proximity and the strength that you all have to help us, I just would like to please ask you to not let this go through, that this water tap also represents Longmont. You don't allow it in Longmont. Don't know what that might look for the future, but to allow it there, you are impacting us in ways that really will make a difference, and I just ask that you please reconsider what you're thinking to do there for us. Thank you.
James Johnston.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm back again. In fact, I told one of them a while ago, we've got season tickets on these seats here. So, we are still looking for a place to live. We're having to stay with a relative right now, and it's rather crowded, but they were kind enough to let us stay with them so we wouldn't have to sleep in our car. But we need to have a house, and we need help to find it, and it just seems like we've tried everything we can do, and we haven't been able to find the thing that we can afford on our income. So, we'd like for you to take notice of this and see if somebody can come up with an idea to help us out. Really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Georgiana Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, we need a home, and we've been looking. In fact, tonight on the internet, I found a place, and I called our real estate woman, and she called and checked and said it was a false advertisement. So, but the thing is, is we have, there isn't anybody that we haven't checked with here. On the internet, all the housing people, all the people that rent, and there's got to be some nice landlords, there's got to be some nice, we're kind of looking in to buy too, but there's got to be affordable housing. So, we're trusting you people that we put in, we voted in, and you wanted this position to kind of some way, somehow, work something out, and we know the Lord's working it out. It just hasn't come yet. So, we have faith in you, we're praying for you, and you know, there's, this is a big city of almost a hundred thousand, so there has to be affordable housing. There's lots of things coming in, I see, but right now, it hasn't come right yet that it works for us. So, thank you very much, and I'm sure that something's going to come, and you're all, we come because you're over it. You see different things, you work with different things, so there's got to be something. Thank you very much. Lord bless you.
Quick question for you, Harold. The Spring Creek Apartments that we're having a ribbon cutting on tomorrow, are those affordable apartments or market rate, or would you know anything about?
That's the one by, they're all, is that the one by North Walmart?
Yeah.
Homestead. That's in the Prairie Village, right?
Three-twenty Homestead.
That's it. Yeah, okay. So, they're, that is the, yes, that's the Housing Authority Senior Housing Project. I know that they have been taking applications for that for quite some time. I don't know if that's filled up or whether there's a waiting list, but that is part of the Housing Authority, which is in the affordable world.
Sue Connolly.
I live at 136 South Main Street here in Longmont. I'm asking you to please move ahead with Consent Agenda Item 8C, which is an ordinance number 2016-70 for approving a vacation of the Colorado Avenue. We've lived next to Colorado Avenue for twenty-five years, and it's been a ghost avenue for twenty-five years, and currently, on part of that, there's half a cistern hole. That's a historic cistern hole that goes to the house next door that I happen to live at, that the house was built in 1872. So, you own half a hole, and I own half a hole, and we'd kind of like to own the whole hole.
Yeah.
So, we'd like to ask you to vacate Colorado Avenue so that we can bring that back into the fold with the estate that it used to be on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I guess we got Joshua Hennington.
Councilmembers, hi. I'm just here to answer any questions that you guys might have about the water tap, quarterly water tap.
You know, this isn't really an answer, question and answer type thing, but if you could maybe talk about, you know, how you're going to control security and smells and those.
Sure. We, yeah, sure. We basically went through this with Boulder County, and there are strict requirements for any facility like this that are mandated by the state and also by the county. So, there are nuisance requirements in terms of smells, and then if you have any, you have a warning, and then you can actually lose your license after that, so it's very strict. Control-wise, we use numerous devices to control them, and these are commercial air handlers, excuse me, filters, and you basically want your facility to be secure. You want your facility to not have any smell, so that's our goal. That's a corporate mission for us, and it also is in our best interest to do so. A lot of presumption of failure perhaps is going on, or presumption of incompetence that's not actually there. So, we're looking to use every means possible to control security, to control the look of the building, to control smells, and all of those things are mandated both by Boulder County and by the state.
Okay. You got three minutes if you want to say anything?
That's it, guys. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Okay.
Officer.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. That ends first call Public Invited to Be Heard.
Mayor, your next item is the Consent Agenda. The first few items are the budget ordinances. They are all scheduled for public hearing on October 25th. The first one is Ordinance 2016-65, a bill for an ordinance fixing and levying taxes upon the real and personal property within the city of Longmont for the year 2016 to pay budgeted city expenses for the 2017 fiscal year. The second budget ordinance is Ordinance 2016-66, fixing and levying taxes upon the real and personal property within the Longmont Downtown Development District for the year 2016 to pay budgeted expenses of the Longmont Downtown Development Authority for the 2017 fiscal year. Then there's Ordinance 2016-67, bill for an ordinance adopting the budget for the city of Longmont for the year 2017. And finally, the last budget ordinance is Ordinance 2016-68, bill for an ordinance making appropriations for expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2017. Consent Item 8B is 2000, Ordinance 2016-69, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of a 627.75 by 30-foot utility easement on Lot 1, Lot 14, Harvest Junction Village, generally located east of South Martin Street and south of East Ken Pratt Boulevard. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for October 25th. 8C is Ordinance 2016-70, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of a portion of Colorado Avenue, generally located east of South Main Street, south of First Avenue, and north of Ken Pratt Boulevard. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for October 11th. Item 8D is Resolution 2016-101, approving the agreement for water tap outside city limits between the city and Robert Gorley. Item 8E is approve three capital improvement program amendments, and Item 8F is suspend the council's rule of procedure 25A to set the start time of the October 25th, 2016 regular session at 7:30 p.m. instead of 7:00 p.m. regular session at 7:30 PM instead of 7:00 PM. Staff did not request that we pull any of these items.
Councilmember Christiansen?
I'd like to pull Item D so we could discuss it.
Okay. Councilmember Moore?
I move the Consent Agenda, less Item D.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote. That passes five to zero with Councilmember Bagley and Councilmember Peck absent.
The first item on your second reading ordinances is Ordinance 2016-62, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2016. And we do not have a formal staff presentation on this.
Okay. If there's no questions from council, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-62. Is anybody in public who'd like to speak on this ordinance? Council, I guess I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I'd like to move Ordinance 2016-62.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote. That passes five to zero with Councilmember Bagley and Councilmember Peck absent.
Your next item is Ordinance 2016-63, a bill for an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 2.20 of the Longmont Municipal Code on the Adoption of Rules and Regulations Governing the Use of City Property. I believe Sean Lewis has a few remarks.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, Sean Lewis, Assistant City Manager. Just wanted to briefly say that this is a set of rules that we briefed you on a few weeks ago. We have a team of folks within the city, interdepartmental group, that is looking at some behavioral problems that we've seen a real uptick in, particularly at the library and the memorial recreation facility, and we have some behavioral problems at other areas as well. So what we've done is created some guidelines that we think will help clarify the various different rules and regs that exist within different facilities, and really kind of consolidate those into one set of guidelines. So this will give the city manager the authority to establish those rules, so that when, we can then train all of our staff in how to deal with any behavioral problems and move forward with hopefully better behavior in our facilities. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions from council? All right, thanks, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-63. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-63. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I'd like to move Ordinance 2016-63.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote. That passes five to zero with Councilmember Peck and Councilmember Bagley absent.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is Ordinance 2016-64, bill for an ordinance designating the Reinhardt House as 330 Collier Street as a local historic landmark. And again, we do not have any formal staff presentation on this item.
Okay, if there's no questions from council, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-64, excuse me. Councilmember Christiansen?
I don't have a question, I just, I'd like to say that I'm grateful to this couple to rehabilitating this house, because it really is a very nice house. It's mostly been lived in by normal human beings, but not for the last 10 years or just so. And so, it's good to have it, it'll be good to have it restored to our housing stock, and the neighbors will be very grateful too. So, thank you to them for being willing to do this.
Okay. Okay, now I'll open up the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-64. Is anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance? Okay, I'll close the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-64. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I'd like to move passage of Ordinance 2016-64.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote. And that passes five to zero with Councilmember Bagley and Councilmember Peck absent.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is Item D from the Consent Agenda, which is the water tap at Gourley, for Gourley's, and that is Ken Houston that will be making the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council, I'm Ken Houston, Water Resources Manager, and I am prepared to present some of the background information if there's any, anything you would like me to cover, if, or if you would prefer just having your discussion. I'd be happy to answer any questions, however you'd like me to handle that tonight.
Well, since Councilmember Christiansen pulled the thing, why don't you start?
Okay, well, I want to discuss incorporated versus unincorporated, but just for, should this council decide to pass this, can you tell me the benefits of the fire hydrant, which I believe would be actually a benefit to hygiene? Because they now have one by the school, and they, is there any fire hydrant in this particular area of town?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember Christiansen, there are two fire hydrants in the Lyons area, one basically in front of the Clark Store, and then one north up by the elementary school. Those fire hydrants are actually on the distribution system that distributes water to the hygiene area. This particular fire hydrant would be installed along what we call 17th Avenue, Hygiene Road, in the general vicinity of where this outside water tap is. There's really kind of a dual benefit, the benefit to the city system, we would actually install this fire hydrant on a transmission line that currently runs from Lyons area to our system that doesn't have any fire hydrants on it in this general vicinity, so this would give our system the ability to drain, or to flush, or to utilize the fire hydrant otherwise for our system purposes. It would also provide that dual benefit if, in the case of a fire, either at this location or anywhere, but it would provide that in that general area as well. So it really typically, we, we just, we would install a system fire hydrant, that's a very typical thing for us to do, but because it involved an installation at this location, at this general with outside water tap, we wanted to make sure we had in the record that this activity could happen.
And what is the closest fire department, and what's the average time to get from that to hygiene, to say Main Street and hygiene?
So this particular area is in the Hygiene Fire Protection District, and the Hygiene Firehouse is right there at the intersection of 75th, so really just a couple houses down from where this would be installed, so actually it'd be, how long would it take the volunteers to get there? But, yeah, it's fairly close to the station.
I have a question, how far away is this property from the school? Like 300 yards, 500 yards, ballpark?
You know, I don't know that exact answer, but the applicant, Mr. Gourley's here, if I could ask him, he could probably-
Yeah, go ahead and ask him, he could-
Be much more accurate in that answer.
Right.
800 yards.
Okay.
800 yards. Okay, his answer was approximately 800 yards, 800-
Feet, I'm sorry.
800 feet.
800 feet.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Finley?
How close is the nearest house where people live?
Hi, Josh Hennington, there's a commercial business on both sides of this property. Across the street, there is a farmhouse, it would be approximately 250 feet away from the front of the building, triple the call for setback.
And this building's being designed from the ground up, just specifically for this purpose?
Yes, sir, it's ground up built for the purpose of doing this with the least possible smell and the least possible risk of security.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, and how far is the new facility going to be from Hygiene Road? Is it going to be set?
It's nine, the setback is 90 feet from the center of the road, but we set the building at 110 feet from the center of the road, just for aesthetic, to keep it back from the town.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Okay, well, I'd just like to put this on the record. I, you know, this is the problem with unincorporated places, they have no vote in Longmont, and yet we make decisions that affect them, and yet that's, that's the only position we can take is, you know, we, by law, people have a right to, they choose not to be in an incorporated thing, but it is difficult to be, to incorporate if you're a small town like Hygiene. My view is that this is a very small town, and this will have a very big effect, and that dozens of people have already shown up to protest to the commissioners, so it's, it really leaves me feeling like, feeling very torn, because is there actually a benefit, a clear benefit to the inhabitants of the city? The city, really, that we're talking about is Hygiene, and many of them are saying that there isn't a benefit to them, but there would be a benefit if we installed another fire hydrant, but I'm not sure that, that that makes up for it. However, what we can do legally is questionable to me. I mean, they have the right to have a business there, and it seems like they are trying to be responsible, so it's very difficult, you know. If I were living in Hygiene, I would not particularly want a giant grow house there, but, you know, Hygiene has to decide that for themselves, and they can't, so they've already given it their shot, I guess.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. We do have the right to determine if granting this is a benefit to the inhabitants of the city, of our city. That's our job, and I don't really see where this benefits our city. And I happen to know that the people who live in Hygiene, and I've talked to several, I do not believe it will benefit their city as well. So I won't be voting for this, and I think, I think the county commissioners failed Hygiene. I think they failed in their duty to protect the nature of that community, and, and now it's up to us to do it, and I'm, I'm willing to.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, well, I have concerns about how close it is to a farmhouse across the street, how close it is to the schools, I mean, looking back at our own rules and regs that we were looking at when we were looking at medical marijuana dispensaries, I believe it was 1,000 feet, or even 500 feet from, from a locate, from one location to another, or a school, or a church. But I mean, we, I'm having difficulty with it, and I have to agree with Councilmember Finley, that I'm surprised that the commissioners would approve something so close to residences, residences and a school. And just looking at it, just on that view itself, I, I don't understand, regardless of how good your security system is, or how good your ventilation system is, if, it's, I'm just baffled that, or maybe they just punted it to us to see what we would do. I have difficulty with approving this, because the benefit for the city is that we grant a commercial line and we get money. But I would be hard pressed to, to take it within my purview as a council member to say, well, if this is going in, I have to look at the, how it affects hygiene, not only for those neighbors, but the school itself, and I'm not sure I can do that.
I think I'm going to weigh in here, you know, it's, it's not like a retail place where you have high traffic, you know, it's designed from the ground up, so it's totally different than, you know, a medical marijuana shop or a retail shop. It's cure, if it's built right, you know, it probably will provide, you know, five It was approved by our water board. I guess I, I don't see any reason why not to approve it, we always seem to approve our recommendations from, we get from the water board from this tap, so I guess I'd be supporting it. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I too am of the opinion that it's not really a clear benefit to the city of Longmont, and, I mean, enough's been said already, I won't be supporting it either.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I'm moved to deny Resolution 2016-101.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. And it passes four to one with Councilmember Christiansen, Moore, Santos, and Finley approving it. Mayor Coombs descending, and Councilmember Bagley and Peck absent.
And, and Mayor, if I could ask just one clarifying position, with this not moving forward, staff will, would ask for a little additional clarification on, on the existing, since it is an existing tap, it was a residential tap, to continue it, it would have had to been changed to the commercial tap, which is what we turned down today. We, we, staff would appreciate some direction on, you know, we would have options such as terminating the tap, since it doesn't have, you know, a tap agreement, to requiring it to be used only for residential, or allowing it to continue with its current use, so any, any additional direction would be appreciated on that. Thoughts?
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I don't believe this particular property has a tap agreement because it's too old. It's historically has been a residential tap, and I would be okay with continuing that.
I guess I'd be okay with continuing it too. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I would agree. Ken, is there, is there a way for the applicant to terminate the tap and perhaps try to get water from a different location?
There are no other domestic suppliers in that area.
I think of one that's close, but I don't know if their distribution lines go out that far, and I don't think they do.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It would take a little work.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, and this is not to say that if another operation, I've heard rumors that going around that other operations are trying, looking to come into the city, case by case basis, I'm not looking at how this one will affect another one. This is one that was done, the next one, if it comes through, looking at it with fresh eyes, just on one of seven.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore? Oh, Ken, did you get your clarification?
Did you get your clarification?
Okay, I wasn't sure if the-
Yes, we did, thank you very much.
Well, now it's time for final call public invited to be heard.
Hi.
Hi, my name's Lonnie DeLefka, and I live in Hygiene, and I just want to thank the council members for sticking up for what's right, common sense prevails, Hygiene's a beautiful community, and I appreciate the hard work that you folks put into understanding the issue. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to come down and speak? I would like to dill her remarks, I love Hygiene, I love that purple door store there, and how friendly they are to the bikers, and the cafe, it is a neat town. Is, is there anybody else that'd like to come speak?
I just want to say thank you very much for, for protecting who we are, for helping us have a voice, and seeing who we are out there, and I'm very, very thankful for, for the vote today, and I just want to say thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else? All right, I'm going to call, close second, or publicly be heard, and we now move on to mayor and council comments. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I'd like to have a business of the week. My business of the week is the Crane Hollow Cafe out at Hygiene. It's an awesome place for breakfast, you should go out there sometime, enjoy breakfast or lunch, and check out the Crane Hollow Cafe.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, you already mentioned it, but I'd like to remind everybody, from three to five tomorrow at eight sixty Homestead is the opening dedication ceremony for Spring Creek Senior Housing Living, it's going to be mirrored in the future by another similar building, with another sixty units of senior housing, so I'd just like to invite the public out there for that from three to five, and kudos to Longmont Housing Authority for getting that completed. And just as a side note, I'd like to congratulate our Councilman Santos for being selected for the nominating committee for National League of Cities for their Board of Directors.
Councilmember Christiansen.
I wanted to give a shout out to TLC Learning Center, which has had, had its sixtieth anniversary this year, or this week, and I attended the ceremony, and I just want to say that it's a, it really is a wonderful thing that Longmont should be proud of, it has, it was started in about nineteen seventy-one, and it has always been really supported by the community, it was created by this community, it was set, it was always supported by initially businessmen and individuals, and they have put so much love into this, they have books and books of photographs of every kid who's ever been through there, and they, it's just very heartwarming. And I ran into Greg Ledlow, whose daughter was there, and Greg Ledlow's dad was mayor of Longmont in nineteen twenty-nine, which must have been a really fun year to become mayor here, but he, he said to me, you know, things are so much better for people like my daughter than they used to be, and I think it's good to remind ourselves of the things that are right about this country, the things that are right about this town, the things that are much, much better than they used to be, the things where we are greater, the things where we are stronger, we've done a great deal to help people who are disabled or have different learning abilities, and that's something we should be very, very proud of as a town and as a country.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, and yes, kudos to TLC, or Tiny Tim, which is always be referred to, my daughter went there as a typical child, but she was oft, we were often sending her to other kids' houses to play, because she challenged some of the other kids to get outside their box of, of normalcy. Thank you, Councilmember Moore, yes, I was asked to be on the NLC nominating committee for the National League of Cities Board of Directors, I'm, that, I'm picking, helping, help choose the board of directors, I'm not going to be on the board of directors. However, I did apply, just to let you all know, for the National League of Cities Finance Administration Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, and as an alternative, the information technologies and communications, just in case. So, you know, the National League of Cities is a very important organization that the City of Longmont belongs to, we, over the years, have had council members on various boards, and, and I'm also on the Hispanic elected local officials board, Councilmember Moore on information technology, Councilmember Finley, Councilmember Christiansen have been on numerous boards, Longmont's has, has had its ear on National League of Cities in the direction that it has advocated for communities throughout the country, so hopefully we will, we will continue that and move it forward. Thanks.
Well, I would just like to remind everybody to check their voter registration, you can go to www.Iwillvote.com and check your address, make sure it's correct, because everything's, ballots are going to be mailed out on the seventeenth, I believe, and that's, excuse me, the fifteenth, yeah. So anyway, it's, this is a very important election, so I don't care who your horses are in this race, but it's important to vote. All right, city manager, any comments?
No comments, mayor and council.
City attorney, any comments?
Mayor and council, I did want to update you on a conference that my office attended just this past weekend, it's the Colorado Municipal League Attorneys Conference in the Fall in Colorado Springs, I attended, as well as Dan Kramer and Teresa Taylor Tate. I firmly believe that this conference is the most targeted conference for what we do, it was very well attended, I think it set a record this year with a hundred forty-one attendees, municipal attorneys from all over the state, as well as private firms that focus in this area. David Broadwell gives his annual municipal law update, reviewing the case law, that alone is worth the price of admission, we also got an employment law update, section nineteen eighty-three, civil rights claims, Attorney General Cynthia Kaufman was the keynote speaker at lunch, got some very interesting views about some of her work, we even heard from Tom Raginetti, who, who has a reputation, perceives him, about a developer's perspective on dealing with city hall, so wanted to say that we're, we're trying to keep up with the latest ongoings in municipal law, and this conference does a great job doing that.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.